Happy Cinco de Mayo Day, and on this wintery, blustery spring day. Welcome to the Town Moderators Annual Information Meeting Session Get Together for the upcoming annual town meeting. Our annual town meeting will be Tuesday, May 17th. Schedule will start at seven and go to 10:00. It can go a second evening, which would be the 18th Wednesday, and that can go from seven to 10:00. And it can go a third night if needed, and that would go from seven to 10:00. And our bylaw allows it to go a fourth evening. Nobody wants that, but do mark your calendars accordingly. Tonight, my intent is to provide the information of the town warrant, and the best way I believe we can do that is to read each article, and those authors, those involved who could give some information on each article, they're welcome too. Some couldn't make it this evening, so we'll probably pass over that article. But the intent is to go through all 30 or so articles and answer any questions from the audience, and you're welcome to come on down, leave your homes and drive down. There's plenty of seats. Town meeting is the town's Southampton Legislative Body. The Select Board and the Finance Committee work extremely hard putting the budget together, creating articles, approving articles, citizens' articles. Any citizen can obtain 10 signatures and place an article automatically on the town warrant. For a special town meeting, you need 100 signatures, and we've had historic citizens' articles on the warrant. But town meeting itself is the people's meeting, and town meeting is run, or rather, the town moderator runs the meeting, not with Robert's Rules of Order, with something that's been tried and true for much longer called Town Meeting Time. And Town Meeting Time has a lot of information. There's a copy in the library in a reference section you're more than welcome to take a look at. So I'm going to start, and I'm going to start reading the articles. Article one, Presentation of Educational Awards, to see if the town will vote to hear presentations of the Richard C. Allen Education Awards sponsored by the Southampton Highway Department and Transfer Station. Jacqueline, you want to say anything on that? It's a scholarships that are given out with the funds from a recycling center, all the bottles and the like that you contribute, and students come up and receive their award, and parents and family are there. And so to allow a ceremony, they're put in as articles. So we have a quick vote, all in favor, and then they take over. Article two, Presentation of Certificates, to see if the town will vote to hear presentation of state certificates. And again, these are separate ceremony that's under the umbrella of a town meeting and procedure. These articles are broken up by section. Article three, Speakers, to see if the town will vote to allow speakers to jointly face town meeting members and town moderator while speaking. And this was put on by the town administrator. Article four, Administrative, Greenway Presentation. This is the Greenway Negotiation Committee, to see if the town will vote to allow a brief presentation on the status of the Greenway Project. Article five, Road Acceptance, Old Harvest Road, and this is put on by the Planning Board, to see if the town will vote to accept Old Harvest Road as a public way as shown in a plan entitled Western View Estates, definitive subdivision, prepared for 777 LLC care of Eugene and James Labrie Sheets 1 to 12, and recorded in the Hampshire County Register of Deeds Plan Book 231, pages 91 to 96. Article six, Net Solar Metering Contract, and this is put on by the Select Board, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a contract or contracts with a term or terms of longer than three years for the purchase of solar and/or other alternative energy-based electricity and/or net metering credits associated with such a facility or facilities on such terms and conditions as it deems appropriate, and to take all actions and execute all documents necessary or appropriate in connection therewith. Any comment on that?
No, Heather wants to speak to it. Heather Brudgerewitz, Town Administrator. So the net solar metering contract is the item that has been discussed by the Board of Selectmen for numerous weeks. The consultant who's working on the Deerfield project, Todd Bard, had actually came down to speak to the Board of Selectmen on several occasions. This is a project that is in the construction phase. Hampshire Regional School District has just signed on themselves. What this allows is a solar field will be built in Deerfield, and we will receive credits. As a result, the credits will end in about $11,000 savings per year for the next 20 years for electricity savings. It is a 20-year contract. We're hoping to have Todd Bard present at town meeting in case there's additional questions, but we will have in the notes section more information when we get to the motions portion with all the details of the project.
Thank you. And by the way, these articles are the four corners of the concept of the article, but the motion can be worded differently, and the motion can have some wiggle room and even appear to read differently as long as it fits within the four corners of the article. That applies to every article. Article seven, Repurpose Prior Voted Article, September 2012, Article Two, and this is put on by the Water Commission, to see if the town will vote to amend its vote under Article Two of September 18, 2012, Special Town Meeting, which authorized the expenditure of $175,000,000 from the Southampton Water Department Enterprise Fund for the construction of a new replacement Glendale well to provide that said funds shall instead be expended by the Water Department for the development of alternative sources of water supply. Do you want to address that? Yes?
Looks like perhaps a zero is missing.
Sorry, I'm not, you want to come up and...
Oh, yes.
There's a zero missing on it, that's all.
Okay.
It's just a typo.
Oh, yeah, right, there is a zero missing. It reads with two zeros rather than three after the comma. Thank you, Marla. Bylaws, Article eight, Zoning Bylaws, amend solar bylaw, this is put on by the Planning Board, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws for the town of Southampton by amending Section 16 Solar Electric Generating Facilities as written in attachment, and there will be attachment provided at the town meeting.
It's on the warrant, Robert.
Okay, great.
It's already included.
Great.
And it will be online this afternoon.
It'll be online this afternoon, and it's already in the warrant. Thank you, Heather. Article nine, General Bylaws, Add Stretch Code, this is put on by the Select Board, to see if the town will vote to enact Article 38 of the Town of Southampton General Bylaws entitled Stretch Energy Code for the Purpose of Regulating the Design and Construction of Buildings for the Effective Use of Energy pursuant to Appendix 1158AA of the Massachusetts Building Code 780 CMR, the Stretch Energy Code, including future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto, with effective date of January 1, 2017, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk and also attached herein. And I believe there will be a session, an information session, next Thursday, 5:30 here at the Town Hall. Fiscal Year Budget, '17, put on by the Select Board, Article 10, Transfer or amortization of WPAT Bonds, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $20,401 to fund the amortization of WPAT bonds. Said sum shall be taken from the WPAT loan repayment account. Article 11.
Moderator, do we have any idea how much the town is in debt for this particular article?
Anyone know?
It's my understanding, the accountant was unable to be here at the time, but it's my understanding that this isn't so much a debt piece, this is the money that's taken aside in order to do the loans.
Okay.
For those coming in for septic betterments.
Okay.
I don't believe, this isn't a debt, this is actually the revenue side of things. So this is the money we're getting to be able to take care of those loans, I believe, or be able to loan out to others.
It's like a roll over.
If that makes sense.
Article 11, Transfer of Ambulance-Related Expenses, is put on by the Select Board, and this requires a two-thirds vote for approval. Transfer for ambulance-related expenses, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $158,000 to fund the EMS ambulance-related expenses, and some shall be taken from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account. Any questions? Article 12, Appropriate for Transfer Station Enterprise Fund, and this is put on by the Highway Superintendent, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $207,613 for the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund or take any related action related thereto to be funded from the following sources. Permits, charges, tipping, $75,000; bag fees, $35,000; recycling dividends, $79,000; small-scale intuitive grant, $10,000; investment income, $750; retain earnings, zero; and I got the, restart again. Permits, $75,000; charges, tipping, $35,000; bag fees, $79,050; recycling dividends, $10,000; small-scale initiative grant, $750; investment income, zero; retain earnings, zero; WPAT subsidies, $7,813, for total of $207,613. To be expended as follows. Wages, $27,812; operating expenses, $142,280; debt service, $23,525; principal and interest, zero; indirect costs, $13,996, for a total of $207,613. Article 13, also put on, oh, this one's put on by the Water Superintendent, appropriate for Water Enterprise Fund, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $633,999.32 for the Water Enterprise Fund or take any related action related thereto to be funded from the following sources. Water charges, $502,371.39; hookup charges, $29,630; investment income, $2,000; retained earnings, $45,000; WPAT subsidies, $54,997.93, for a total of $633,999.32. To be expended as follows. Salary and wages, $157,918; operating expenses, $131,000; capital outlay, $71,795.19; debt service, $220,907.13; indirect costs, $52,379, for a total of $633,999.32. Article 14, put on by the Select Board, Appropriate for Omnibus Budget, Fiscal '17, to see if the town will vote to fix salaries in all elected officials for the fiscal year 2017 for the period from July 1, 2006 to June 30, 2017, and further to raise inappropriate monies as identified in the town's omnibus budget as attached for such fiscal year. Heather.
Hi. So the budget is attached, like you said, Robert. The total amount this year, that is the balance budget in revenues and expenses, is $15,633,191. The budget, you can also see, like I said, it's attached, and we're also going to be uploading to the website today, or probably tomorrow at this point, all the detailed department-by-department pieces. So if anyone has any questions of how it evolved, what happened with it, all the data will be there, including past year's budget information as well. And if folks have additional questions, they can always contact me between now and the town meeting.
Thank you. Article 15, Revolving Funds, is put on by the Select Board, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of Section 53 1/2 of Chapter 44, 53E 1/2, Chapter 41 of the Massachusetts General Laws, to authorize the operation of revolving funds for certain town departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2006, with specific receipts credited to each fund, the purpose for which each fund may be spent and the maximum that may be spent from each fund for the fiscal year as follows. Revolving Fund Title, Councilman Aging Van, the authorization, the authorized to spend fund, Councilman Aging Director. Revenue Source, receipts from operation of van. Use of fund, payment for operation of Councilman Aging Van, and FY '17 spending limit is $30,000. The revolving fund title, Dog Licensing and Control, authorized to spend fund, Town Clerk and Dog Officer. Revenue Source, dog license fees and other related charges. Use of fund, expenses related to administration of licenses and dog control, and their FY '17 spending limit is $8,000. The Reviving Fund Title, Electrical Inspections, authorized to spend fund, electrical inspector. Revenue Source, the electrical inspection receipts. Use of fund, payment for electrical inspection services, and the FY '17 spending limit is $15,000. Park Commission, Revolving Fund Title, the authorized to spend fund, park commission. Revenue Source, field usage fees. Use of fund, operating expenses, administrative expenses, $10,000 is the FY '17 spending limit. And the Revolving Fund Title, Planning Board, authorized to spend fund, planning board. Revenue Source, filing fees. Use of fund, operating expenses, administrative expense, or I'll let me back up on that one, administrative expenses, and the FY '17 spending limit, $10,000. Planning Board again, this one is consultant charges, and the use of the fund is consultant cost, and the FY spending limit is $15,000. And Plumbing Inspection, Plumbing Inspector, plumbing inspection receipts for payment for plumbing inspection services, and the FY spending limit is $15,000. Tax Title, Treasury Collector, receipts from tax title, tax title-related cost, and the FY '17 spending limit is $10,000. Waits and Measures, Waits and Measures, incoming receipts from fees, waits and measure fees, and their FY '17 spending limit is $3,000. And the last one for this article, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Zoning Board of Appeals, receipts from fees and ZBA expenditures, and their FY '17 spending limit is $3,000. Fiscal Year FY 15... Yes? I've been saying 2006 instead of 2016, so for all my 2006 transgressions, add 10 years, please. Thanks. Fiscal Year '15 Budget Stabilization Accounts, this was put on by our town accountant. Article 16, Prior Year Bill, FY '15, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $397.30 to pay prior year bills from FY '15 to Greenwood Industries for roofwork on the Norris Elementary School, and some shall be taken from the operating stabilization. And this requires a four-fifths vote, and historically, we're used to a nine-tenths vote, and a nine-tenths vote is under the umbrella of a special town meeting, and the annual town meeting will require a four-fifths vote. Fiscal Year '17 Budget Stabilization Accounts, general title. Article 17, Transfer to Ambulance Stabilization, this was put on by the Select Board, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from the ambulance receipts reserved to the ambulance stabilization account. And this requires a two-thirds vote. Any comment on this? Article 18, this is put on by our police chief, Transfer from Operating Stabilization for Ballistic Vest, to see if the town votes to transfer the sum of $5,451 from operating stabilization for 13 ballistic vests for the police department, provided, however, that such funds shall not be transferred, borrowed, and are expended unless the town is approved for a bulletproof vest partnership grant from the U.S. Department of Justice and/or any other such sources in the amount of $5,451 or more, and this requires a two-thirds When we have two-thirds votes, all in favor, all opposed, one person says nay, we need a count for the Attorney General. We can't say, well, mostly everybody voted yes, but there was maybe one or two, so no maybes, and this is why we have the count. When it's unanimous, we don't need to count. It's 100%, and that's why we do that. Article 19, Transfer from Capital Stabilization for Police Cruiser, and this is put on by the Capital Improvement Committee, to see if the town will vote to transfer $53,196 to the police department to fund the purchase of a new police cruiser with camera and laptop. Said sum shall be taken from the Capital Stabilization Fund. Requires a two-thirds vote. And nobody's here from the Capital Stabilization Committee or the police department, so we'll go on to Article 20. Transfer from Article Stabilization for Turnout Gear, this is put on by the Capital Improvement Committee, to see if the town will vote to transfer $9,000 to the fire department to fund the purchase of a firefighter turnout gear. Said sum shall be taken from the Capital Stabilization Fund. And this one, as the one before, requires a two-thirds vote for approval. Article 21, Transfer from Capital Stabilization for Elementary Laptops, to see if the town will vote to transfer $22,000 to the elementary school to fund the purchase of 11 teacher laptops. Said sum shall be taken from the Capital Stabilization Fund, and this requires a two-thirds vote. All those at home, you can go down and get your popcorn now and wait a second or two. Not really. Article 22, Transfer from Capital Stabilization for Elementary Projectors, that's difficult to say. Capital Improvement Committee put this on the warrant. To see if the town will vote to transfer $6,400 to the elementary school to fund the purchase of four classroom projectors, and some shall be taken from the Capital Stabilization Fund, and this requires a two-thirds vote. Article 23, Transfer from Capital Stabilization for Elementary Door, Capital Improvement Committee is the author of this article, to see if the town will vote to transfer $9,925 to the elementary school to fund the purchase of security door retrofits. Said sum shall be taken from the Capital Stabilization Fund. And yes, this article requires two-thirds vote for approval. Fiscal Year '17 Budget Community Preservation, Article 24, Report of Community Preservation, to see if the town will vote to hear and enact pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2016, community preservation budget, and to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund the following sums of money as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for community administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other necessary and proper expenses in fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Should that be a different year than 2015? That was last year. Wow. There may be a, there may be a motion to change that on the town floor, in the main motion, which is how some of these corrections are done. From Fiscal Year '17, Estimated Revenue for Historic Resources Reserve is $17,900. Fiscal Year '17, Estimated Revenues for Community Housing Reserve, $17,900. And from Fiscal FY '17, Estimated Revenues for Open Space Reserve is $17,900. Virginia, would you like to say anything on this, or we're good?
Well, I'll just... Virginia A. Hart, the Chair of Community Preservation. The first two of these are just regular articles that we have to do each year. 10% must be saved each year for these, the three that you see listed under Article 24. It has to be reserved for those. The rest of the funds can go into undesignated, but for example, if it is in housing, community housing, it has to stay there. It cannot be taken out for anything else.
Thank you. Article 25, Transfer for CPC Administrative Expenses, to see if the town will vote to transfer the amount of $10,000 to the Community Preservation Committee to fund the administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee. Said sum shall be taken from the Community Preservation Surcharges Undesignated Account. Yeah, thank you.
This is just our operating expenses. We usually don't spend all that, and if not, then it goes back into undesignated the next, at the end of the year. But this allows us to attend conferences, you know, things like that. Or we can do appraisals of property... Or we can do appraisals of property if it comes up without having to wait for a town meeting. That kind of operating, I'll just say.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Article 26, transfer for veterans' grave markers, to see if the town will vote to transfer the amount of $5,000 to the veterans' grave officer to fund the purchase of 10 flat markers for the veteran's grave. Said sum shall be taken from the community preservation surcharges historical preservations account.
This and the next one are the ones that our veterans' grave officer has been working very diligently on, to get markers for all of our veterans, permanent markers, and to also, you know, kind of do what needs to be done to restore especially the Revolutionary and Civil War. But the two of them, our veterans' grave officer is Mr. Frery, and he's working very diligently on this constantly.
Great. Thank you. Article 27, which you referred to, transfer restoration of veterans' monuments, to see if the town will vote to transfer the amount of $2,000 to veterans' grave officer to fund the restoration of Revolutionary War and Civil War veterans' monuments. Said sum shall be taken from the community preservation surcharges historical preservation account. That's what we covered. Still under the umbrella of CPC. Article 28, transfer for Clark Chapman House, to see if the town will vote to transfer the amount of up to $15,000 to the Southampton Historical Society to fund climate control needs at the historic Clark Chapman's House to rectify the flooding of the basement and for dehumidifier. Said sum shall be from community preservation surcharges undesignated account.
This also has the approval of the Historical Commission when we discuss this, and they are in favor, very much in favor of this. Many of the items in the Clark Chapman House can be, and probably are being, somewhat damaged by the dampness there. And so they have to do something to divert the water that's running in, and also to dehumidify what's already happened and keep it that way. And they have obtained different proposals on this, so that they do know it can be done with the diversion of the water and the amount that it will cost.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Virginia, I have a question for the floor. So you're getting flooding in the basement there? How bad is it, or?
Well, I don't really, I don't know. I haven't been down in their basement. It's the curator who, the, the board for the Clark Chapman, well, for the Historical Society, has been concerned about this for some time. Annie Searle is the curator now, and she has pursued this. So I, I don't know, but it, it has been, water's been running in there.
Thank you. Interjecting, and I've, I've done this historically, and then I've sliced off various concepts, but in a town meeting, everybody is equal. Everybody has a vote. The only one who doesn't vote is the town moderator. Town moderator, when there's a tie, with their salt will break the tie. The town moderator also has the authority presented by, by the Commissar of Massachusetts to create a tie. And that's rarely seen. And everyone's allowed to amend an article, to table it, to make an amendment to the amendment. We can't have more than two amendments floating on the floor, so if there's amendment to amend the article, we have to deal with the amendment to the amendment. Once we deal with that, we talk about the amendment, not the article. And then we vote on the amendment. And then somebody can make another amendment. And then we deal with that amendment. Somebody can make amendment, and it's happened. There are seasoned town meeting goers, and they're smooth, and they have everything prepared. There are individuals who should not be disenfranchised, or bullied, or intimidated by those who are seasoned. So some moderators, I included, will walk someone through. So all someone needs to do, saying, I want to make a motion, I don't know how to do it, or I want to amend the motion, and I simply will walk them through it. Okay. Article 29, transfer for historic barn stabilization, to see if the town will vote to transfer the amount of up to $20,000 to the Conservation Commission to be used for the stabilization of the historic red barn on conservation land formerly owned by the Zipta family, and some shall be taken from community preservation surcharges undesignated account.
And this, too, has been supported by the Historical Commission. This is only a first step. The barn is in bad shape. I happen to be going by it today from East Hampton, and the wind is picking up one piece of the roof and dropping it down now, back in place. It is a historical artifact, and it does need, we have to, the town needs to make some real plans on how to use that. But in the meanwhile, we won't ha, the town won't have to make plans if it isn't, there isn't some effort to begin to stabilize it. It will be past that. And they did go to three or four people who, not builders, but people who have historic knowledge and have gotten their ideas and their, their quotes.
Great. Thank you.
I wish I remembered exactly. I remember when the land was, the property was turned over to the town from the Zipkas. That had to be taken, went to the Conservation Commission, and there are trails there for walking, and it's wildlife, and all sorts of things. I remember it, but I can't tell you what year it was. It was before I became involved with community preservation, so it was before 2000.
Probably 30 years ago.
Huh?
Probably 30 years ago.
Yeah, I would think. And there was quite a bit of discussion at that time about taking it over. And we've had, a couple times, things have come to community preservation, but this one is being followed through on, finally.
There are some green handouts, sometimes they're in the library, that show a map and give a little bit of history, and so mu, so many were made that there's still, there still seems to be in excess. We have one more article, article, oh, any, yeah?
Yeah, I really visit the park. Property was also, jointly with Water Commission, the Conservation Commission, and state grants.
And there's a, a self-help grant, and there's also the Cormier property, which is under the umbrella of the Water Commission. We have one more article, and we're running way ahead of schedule, so I'm going to take the liberty of walking us through briefly, town meeting.
And I am going to step down.
Okay.
This is, in Syria, I'm not as comfortable with.
Oh, no, please do, please do. Every citi, hi, Charlie. Every citizen who is a registered voter in town is allowed to vote in an election. And in an election, you go in, you give your name, you give your address, it's checked off, you receive a ballot. And in a town meeting, same thing. You walk in, you give your name, you, you give your address, and you're given a ballot. And it's a different color each year. And you're given the warrant, and there are articles, articles, there are handouts on the tables near the check-in table, and for the authors of the articles, and also for the opponents. Yes, opponents. This is a town meeting. I, as town moderator, am not sworn to go either way with an article. I, as town moderator, can encourage an author of an article, what the best way may be to to have it pass. I, as a moderator, have the responsibility of, of not being prejudiced to talk to an opponent of an article and suggest ways the opponent may defeat an article. So I have that neutral base as a moderator. And essentially, you sit in the meeting, and while you're sitting in the meeting, we, we go through ceremony, I go through my preamble, and I will call for a motion under the article. And there are times when, historically, we've had that, where the select board decided they don't want that article in play. So either they won't say anything, which means it's open for anybody, everybody. The select board are given the motioning responsibility as a privilege, as our culture, as our heritage. But anybody can make a motion, and historically has. The select board who vote, and the finance committee who, who vote to recommend, can vote the opposite in a meeting. And this has historically happened. So in a meeting, although we have the experience of, of who we are, an official of the town, we are Joe and Josephine citizen, and we can act any way our heart carries us, which is why I preamble every single town meeting with, just because you hear it doesn't make it true. And often, I imagine there are mistruths, not on purpose. So we have this information meeting. We encourage everyone at home to look at these articles, to come to the meeting, and to engage. This is democracy. Allegedly, our families die in battle to save our democracy, and we sit at home and we don't go. Yes, it can be intimidating. We don't know what a town meeting is, and it can be tremendously boisterous, as we have in, in, in the eastern part of the state. And yes, if somebody tries to hold the meeting hostage, if somebody doesn't abide by the guidelines set by the moderator, everybody receives their first warning. A second warning, a third warning is issued, and then the police officer comes quickly and escorts that individual out of the meeting and out of the building. And we don't want that to happen, but I, with that responsibility, need to be ready, and I have that discussion. But we have a democracy, and, and we have to, we have to practice, we have to use our democracy. And so the town controls the purse strings, I'm sorry, the town meeting, the citizens controls the purse strings of, of, of the town. And, and not to be compliant rubber stamps. So it's not a challenge, but citizens can make any motion they like, and, and they do. And sometimes it's out of order. And when a motion is out of order, the moderator will rule it out of order. Somebody can protest that, and the moderator can make that decision on, on their own, or they can ask for counsel by the town council, that's provided, provided and paid for by the town. But the town council, the lawyer from Boston, Copman Page, is only there for the needs of the town moderator. And it's teamwork. It's, but the concept of, of the laws of Massachusetts, of the Commonwealth, is the moderator controls all the proceedings in a town meeting. There's absolutely no power, no authority outside of a town meeting. But in that town meeting, that town moderator, whoever it is, has the authority and the responsibility not to allow anybody to hold that meeting hostage. We have Channel 191, which you're watching live from, East Hampton Media. They film, they record the town meeting. We don't have the equipment set up yet at 2016. Perhaps in the future, we will be able to broadcast live. But in the next day or two, people can go online. There it is on Channel 191 at 6:00 at dinnertime, and you can see the town meeting. You can also go on East Hampton Media's website, and you can see the last two town meetings, a couple handfuls of special town meetings, and all the select boards for years. So for those who have nothing to do on a rainy day and a lot of popcorn, it's kind of interesting. There's a lot going on in, in a town meeting, and I'm there early, and if anybody has any need to ask me a question, or again, ask me a question during a meeting, the idea is to let everybody speak, not to intimidate anybody, to let anybody speak under the umbrella of the article, on the, on the benefits or lack thereof on an article, not on another article, or not on something else that isn't under the umbrella of the article. And there's a lot of latitude, there's a lot of room, and each person has, can speak for, for five minutes, no more than twice on any article unless to answer questions. And I'm done for the, for the moment. And I, we have a deputy moderator, and I'm quite proud of his service. This is the first ear, Carl Keener, and we, we have good discussions on, on what can be done and, and what to do. And we had one concept, one meeting, where we had to split the meeting because we had over 500 people, so we had to have two rooms. And not that we don't want to do that again, but we don't want to do that again. Anyway, I'd like to ask Carl to read Article 30.
You're getting tired.
Well, I'm about ready to take a drink of water, at least, yeah.
Article 30, land acquisition, Cook County Road drinking water and, and open space project, to see if the town will vote, A, to raise appropriate or trans, appropriate or transfer from available funds, accept gifts and grants, and/or borrow the sum of up to $700,000 for the purpose of acquiring, for the purposes below, certain property known as the Gwinna property, consisting of 25.64 acres, more or less, and shown on the assessor's map 30 as parcel 12A.
I'm sorry. No, you're good. The moderator has the right to divide the question, and I believe voting for 14 million, 15 million, 16 million budget needs not be done in one vote. In favor, I oppose. So we divide the question. So for the budget, at least, each section will be divided, will be separated, and we'll discuss one section of the budget and vote on it, and it's closed. We'll go to the next section and do that. When we're all done, we will not vote on all the sections of the budget put together because we've already, and it's legal. For this article, it may be divided, I don't know, but I thought I'd mention it, meaning we would vote on A, B, C, D separately, but we're not at the town meeting yet.
You want me to start over? Section B, that to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to $386,862.50 shall be transferred from the Community Preservation Commission surcharges undesignated, and the treasurer, with approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow the sum of up to $313,137.50, in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 7 of the General Laws as amended, or any other enabling accordance with Chapter 44, Section 7 of the general laws as amended, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes therefore provided. However, that such funds shall not be transferred, borrowed, and/or expended unless the town is approved for either a land, local acquisition for natural diversity grant, or a DWSP Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant, as described below from the Massachusetts Division of Conservation Services, and/or any other such sources, in the amount of at least $313,137,000.
Fifty cents.
Fifty cents. What, I don't understand the 5100 slash. But C, the town is authorized to acquire said property by gift, negotiated purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise for conservation, passive recreation, and/or water supply purposes, subject to the protections of Article 97 of the amendments of the Massachusetts Constitution. And Section I, in the case of the award of a land grant, upon such terms and conditions as the Conservation Commission, with the approval of the select board, shall determine to be appropriate, and that said interests in said property be conveyed to the town under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 8C, as it may hereafter be amended, and other Massachusetts statutes relating to the conservation said property. Oh, I'm sorry, said property to be managed and controlled by the Conservation Commission, and further that the select board and/or Conservation Commission is authorized to submit on behalf of the town any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from any state and/or federal programs in aid of conservation land acquisition, including but not limited to all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the land grant program, and to receive and accept such grants and/or reimbursements for this purpose. And/or any grants or reimbursement programs in any way connected with the scope of this article, and that the select board and/or Conservation Commission be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any instruments, including a grant of a perpetual conservation restriction to the city of East Hampton, the Commonwealth, or a nonprofit corporation or trust that meets the requirements of General Laws, Chapter 184, Section 31 to 33, as may be necessary to effect said acquisition or obtain such grant. Or, double I, in the case of the award of a DWSP grant, upon such terms and conditions as the Water Commissioners, with the approval of the select board, shall determine to be appropriate, and that said interests in said property be conveyed to the town under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 39B and 41, as they may be hereafter amended, and other Massachusetts statutes relating to water supply and conservation purposes, said property to be managed and controlled by the Water Commissioners, and further that the select board and/or Water Commissioners is authorized to submit on behalf of the town any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from any state and/or federal programs in aid of water supply and conservation land acquisition, including but not limited to all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the DWSP grant program, and to receive and accept such grants and/or reimbursements for this purpose. And/or any grants or reimbursement programs in any way connected with the scope of this article, and that the select board and Water Commissioners be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any instruments, including a grant of a perpetual water supply and conservation restriction to the city of East Hampton, the Commonwealth, or a nonprofit corporation or trust that meets the requirements of General Laws, Chapter 184, Section 31 33, as may be necessary to effect the acquisition or obtain such grant. D, to authorize the Conservation Commission, the Water Commission, and/or the Board of Selectmen and the town officers to take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out this acquisition and grant a perpetual conservation restriction, or take any other action thereto.
Okay, and that requires a two-thirds vote. Do we have some comments on that? And as you're doing it, and others have questions, this is an information session, so no votes, no debates, and no presentations. And I understand that this particular article will have a full presentation next Thursday here in the town hall at, what time?
Seven.
Seven. So seven o'clock, there'll be a full presentation. But for tonight, we're going to slice off information and any questions anybody may have in the audience. Yes, Virginia?
My only comment, yeah. I've been asked this a lot of times, is this has come up. This is quite a large sum. And the question that it comes, that I can answer, if you have questions actually about the rest of it, we do have people here who can speak to that, is the funding part. Yes, we have the money. We have more than enough money. Community preservation only, a little operating here about how we operate, we only listen to projects when an outside, and when I say outside group, generally a town board, commission, sometimes it'll be even the select board with a project that they would like to see finished or done, like our new doors here came from the select board, so that we now have handicapped doors rather than having people struggle with those. But we take those projects and we work through them, and we make sure that there's the funding, and they're asking for funding from the right source, and our, well, three parts, really. When that project comes, it's our job as a committee, mine and the eight people that serve on that committee with me, including select board member Jackie Sears, to decide whether or not we should go forward with that, or send them back to ask for more information and to see how things work out. As a result, money can grow, this is money that is outside of the budget, and so we could retain our money. And generally, the idea is they retain their money till something big comes along to work on. And that way, we were able to do the Labrie Field on Strong Road, because that would have been far more than we would have received in a year, and other projects like that. And yes, we have money, and we really shouldn't have as much money as we have in that fund right now. Money should be out there being used, doing things for the town, doing things like the wonderful project they just finished over at Conet Park for the ball fields, which was community preservation funds. And so we have enough money for that, and would still have money left over for other either mid-sized projects or even large projects. And this is a little pitch, if people out there know that there's something they'd like to see done, you can do, bring a project as an individual, as a board, as another activity in town that isn't under the town, such as the Historical Society asking for help with the Clark Chapman House. So this is just a little pitch, if there are projects out there in historical, preservation, restoration, open space recreation, and the one we've had difficulty with is the community housing. Can I make a little pitch for that, too? We have, we, years ago, turned some money over to the Alminers, and this was to help people over 60 whose medical expenses had reached a point where they could not do things to their homes, such as ramps or railings, maybe even enlarging a bathroom door or something, but they don't have the money anymore because they've got health costs, and they'd like to stay in their home. But they're caught between not having the money for the accommodations. So if anyone's out there that's listening is in that kind of situation, please see the Alminers. Our money is sitting there, and the Alminers can use that. But they can't use it, they can't use it to provide you a Christmas dinner. Anyway, so, but the funds are there, and we would still have funds left for other projects, and money comes in all the time. So, and then the state grant comes in the fall.
You want to summarize how the money comes in?
Okay, it's a little, check your tax bill. On the tax bill, there's a little thing that says CPA. That is a surcharge on the taxes you, oh, let's see if I can get the steps right. The first $100,000 of property is exempt from that. So if you have, if your home property is, say, appraised at $300,000, the first $100,000 comes off. $200,000, the taxes you pay on that, then has a 3% surcharge on it. And it comes in when you pay your tax bill. And it's not an awful lot on any one person's tax bill, but added together in this town, it adds up. Then, in the fall, the state gives all of the community preservation communities a state matching grant. And there again, it's based on the percentage that the city or town is paying in. And because we are paying in at the highest, the 3%, they have different rounds, and those people that came in only at one, they get maybe a little bit in the second round, one and a half, maybe a little bit more in the second round, and on up. And we even get into the last rounds. So we've done very, very well. We know each year it's nail-biting as to what percentage that's going to be from the state. That fund comes from a charge, a $20 fee on every deed transaction in this state. So I look at the deed transactions each week and say, ooh, there's a lot of them this Or, oh dear, the market's down. The state legislature is also, because they recognize the importance of community preservation, they have also been putting money in their budget. And it's my understanding that they have 10 million allocated in this next budget, and maybe more, but they start out with a certain amount. We're getting more and more of the larger cities and more and more of the eastern part of the state into it. Now, that's two ways. It does cut down the money in the pool, but it also gives us more legislators who are convinced this is a good program. So there, but anyway, to go back, yes, there's funds.
Thank you. Thank you, Virginia Yehart. I'd like to hear from a representative from the Kestrel Land Trust, just some more information on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Mark Wamson, and I am from Kestrel Land Trust. I am speaking on behalf of this article because I was asked to coordinate the project. I guess what I would like to add is to just a bit of clarification about the context of the project, things which might not be seen through just the pure technicality of the warrant article language, and I think might be helpful for folks. And that is really to clarify that this is a collaborative project involving the communities of Southampton and East Hampton, who at one point deemed that this property was important enough to pursue its protection in one way or another. We're also hoping to have the Commonwealth of Massachusetts also see that the property is important to protect as well through a state grant. And it's going to ultimately take all three of those entities, Southampton, East Hampton, and the state contributing funds to make the project successful. At its simplest, what is success for this project? It would entail the town of Southampton actually purchasing the land and holding the land, East Hampton purchasing a conservation restriction on the property, as well as the state providing funds. So each community and the state ultimately would provide around one-third of the ultimate project cost. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Any questions? You've got a little bit more time if you have any more information?
Sure, absolutely. I can mention that while, you know, these communities and the state may be interested in this land, it is 25.64 acres of forest and farmland between Cook and County Roads. It has value as wildlife corridor for passive recreation, and very importantly, as a buffer to the active reserve drinking, public drinking water supply for the town of Southampton. By appropriating this article, it would do a number of things. It would allow the CPA to appropriate the funds or by approving the article. It would allow the town to borrow the additional, the balance of the funds needed for the purchase, and to apply for the two state grants. And again, we would need to get one or two of those state grants, and ultimately have a successful CPA vote by the city of East Hampton to make it all happen.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sir? Anybody else want to add anything to this? Seeing none? This isn't a real meeting, this is a session, so we don't need to officially adjourn. The warrant will be online. If there's any questions about a town meeting, I'm Robert Floyd, Southampton Town Moderator. My email, townmoderator@charter.net, and I'll give you as much information as I can. I won't get into philosophy, because then I need to share it with everybody else, and that could be, that could be tricky. But I thank you for tuning in. I thank those in the audience for speaking and for coming, and I thank Jacqueline Sears, our select woman from Southampton, and my deputy moderator, Carl Keener, also, of course, from Southampton. And I could go on and on, but I'm not. So, good night, and thank you very much. See you at the annual town meeting. Bye.
Bye.